Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order -- excuse me.
Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the business session, Board of County Commissioners, for Thursday, June 28th. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klicka.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Ilert.
Here.
All our present, we do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it to silent mode or off, so as not to interfere with our electronic communications, as all of our meetings are streamed on online. We do have a very special presentation to make this morning, and I'm going to ask Sheriff Calvin Hayden to join me at the podium. I'm just going to turn the microphone over to the sheriff, and he can give us some background and the recognition that's appropriate this morning. Cal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we're here to -- as most of you know, last year, we had an officer lose his life in the line of duty, and his name was Brandon Collins. He was killed while conducting a traffic stop on 69 Highway in Southern Overland Park. Throughout the year, we had a couple of state representatives that decided that they would help get part of the roadway where Brandon was killed named in his honor. And Representative Tarwater and John Resman carried a bill through the House and the Senate, and ultimately signed by the governor, to name 69 Highway from 167 Street to 215th Street in Brandon's honor. Unbelievable, and it was truly a lesson in how to carry -- and that's how a bill becomes law. They truly went above and beyond. There was testimony from all officers, which was extremely difficult for them, because it's a very emotional time for our guys that were there. But they testified, made -- some didn't make it through it, and it was truly touching. But one of the -- as with anything, one of the costs of getting this done is there is a cost to it. And to have the signs put up, two large signs, and have them maintained and kept up forever was about $6,000 to the state. So our officers decided to have a No Shave November, which is actually a No Shave June. So our officers haven't been shaving, and some of the residents get along with our guys, ask them what was going on. And the River Ridge Farm Association raised a whopping $2,000 towards this goal. And Mike Lane is here, and he was instrumental in that. He and Representative Tarwater and Resman spearheaded this. And we ended up raising enough money to have the signs purchased, and we're ready to go with our end of this. So what an awesome, touching thing to do from the River Ridge Farms. Thank you for supporting us and caring enough to give tribute to our officer. John, thank you. You know, you're still part of our family, and John retired from the sheriff's office as a captain, and he's done us all proud. Thank you for that, Representative. And Representative Tarwater, thank you. Thank you for helping carry the water on this. It means so much to our 630 employees and a lot of the officers in Johnson County. It's a memorial that'll stand forever. Thank you for that. Mike, if you'd like to speak, we'd be more than happy for you to come up and say something if you'd like to. Can't think enough.
There are other representatives from River Ridge.
Yeah, and John, or anyone else?
Why don't we have Representative Rasmann and Tarwater? Are there other representatives of the River Ridge community here this morning?
No, I represent the homeowners.
You're representing the homeowners, Mike? Okay, fine, good. If you'd like to make comment or two, why?
I'd like to start out with that one of our residents was out of town and insisted on donating, so can add that to the fun as well.
Thank you so much.
Well, I'd just like to say that Deputy Collins was patrolled our area quite regularly, so we got to know him in his official capacity. And River Ridge is patrolled within the county, so the county sheriff's department's responsible for taking care of us, and they do an excellent job. And the residents in our community, when they found out that there was a need for maintaining the sign, erecting the sign, they wanted to contribute and honor the deputy who unfortunately lost his life protecting us. So we want to say thank you to the sheriff's department and appreciate them working with us on this.
Well, Mike, thank you very much, and thanks to the residents of your homes association. You know, I would also say, this is special. Thanks to all of those who contributed and were involved in making this happen. And I would also add to those, if you have not seen the memorial area that was constructed out of the sheriff's operations center at New Century, that was, as I understand, the Eagle Scout was involved in that project. It's outstanding. So for anybody who would like to stop by and share in that tribute to our fallen officers, please do so. It's a neat experience. So, representatives, thank you for your good work. And Mike, I'll present this proclamation to you in recognition of the River Ridge community and their participation in supporting this program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, we need a photo. I mean, with two reps here, the sheriff, Mike.
We'll do it right here.
Yeah.
This is the sheriff guy.
Here's the photographer over here. Where do you want me? You're good. You're good.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Sure. One other thing sheriff will share with us this morning.
I don't know if I look tired of you guys or not, but I got in about 12 o'clock last night. We sent 10 officers to Eureka, Kansas, to help with tornado. They were hit yesterday by a tornado, and a lot of devastation out there. Thirteen homes lost, over 100 square blocks wiped out. It went from the south part of town all the way to the north and ended up hitting a high school. It's got about 15 miles of debris on past the devastation. So officers went out there to support the sheriff's department out there. He made a call and asked for help, and we sent 10 officers out. And by the time we left last night, and this is amazing, Eureka's a heck of a city. They had -- when we first got there, you couldn't pass through town anywhere. All the electric lines were down, so what we did was just set up a perimeter so the power company could make sure that the power shut off and get the lines back up. By the time we left at midnight last night, power had been restored, and every street in that city had been cleared by the residents. They're just amazing people, so, and very, very great experience for all of us. But we've got a few officers out there today to do cleanup, and again, thank you for your support in allowing our officers to help our neighbors and the rest of the state of Kansas. So pretty inspiring. We've got pictures we'll put up. It's pretty interesting. But thank you all.
Sheriff.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Chairman.
Eureka's about 45 or 50 miles from where I grew up, and been there many times. It is one of those smaller Kansas communities who are resilient, and they do a great job, and we wish them all the success in the world in moving through this turbulent time for the community. And Sheriff, thank you very much for your assistance in that regard. At this time, we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, would invite you to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments to five minutes. We'll be glad to receive the information. Mr. Raby.
Good morning. Tom Raby, 17513 West 113th Street. That's in Olathe. It's been two, three, or four weeks since I've visited with you folks, and we've had some activity in our families. We had a wedding, an international wedding. Our grandson married a young woman from China who is a IT genius with three or four degrees and still going strong, and--
Congratulations.
Yeah. I'll tell him. He's the photographer for Case State in Manhattan, and they live there, so. But they had their wedding. They tried to have it in Johnson County, but they ended up slightly across the county line into Douglas County, so that's not a bad thing, although it is a gravel road. Aside from that, I also had some family visitors from out of town, from five different states, different ages, myself being the oldest of the group. And they had a good time. They enjoyed mostly Johnson County. They did go into Missouri on a short -- couple of short trips, but they enjoyed it, and they liked the availability of good restaurants, food, accommodations, roads, streets. Their GPS has worked fine, and they didn't get lost. And they were a little bit bemused with our liquor, wine, and beer laws. And I had to try to explain to a couple of them, hey, I'm still confused. It's been that way ever since Carrie Nation went to Lawrence and started chopping up taverns. And it's still that way. But the other thing that amazed, and these were not solicited comments, they also were a little bit aghast at the sales tax rate in some places in the county. And these are folks, a couple of them are IT people, who look at their receipts and see these things. So that being said, it might be a little hard to lure people to move to Kansas or Johnson County unless they're here as a result of recruitment from some -- for nice, some nice job, which there's plenty of nice jobs in Johnson County, and we know that. But for older folks, they migrate here only because they have children or grandchildren here. It's not a go-to place, and that's sad. I wish it were not that way, because we don't -- we do not give any tax breaks to speak of to senior citizens on fixed income. And I like to illustrate what old people do to compensate for this by saying that I know where several free coffee places are, you know, not just here. Car dealers, banks, they're all good for a free cup of coffee. But in spite of that, I also pay $2.25 for a cup of coffee at Nordstrom's E-Bar three days a week, because I walk in the mall. And speaking of the mall, Aristocrat Motors has moved a couple of higher-dollar vehicles back into the mall, which they weren't -- there weren't any there for a while. So the mall doesn't seem to have hardly any vacancies. So for people who tell you that malls are dead, yeah, they said God was dead some years ago, and that didn't work. And the malls, it's not dead yet, maybe, so. But another example of old folks accommodating their economic position. Maybe Chairman Ilert remembers G. Gordon Thomas. Most of you don't.
He was before my time on this board, but there was a lot of conversation, yes.
Yeah, he came here weekly and made a recitation, and I understood that he did the same thing to the city council of Leewood. But Gordon was a gem. He carried a tea bag in his pocket. Now, that's cheap. And we had a sit-down with Governor Anderson in the bowels bottom of this building one time, and Gordon had a little go-around with the clerk there, that he picked up a cup and filled it with hot water, and the clerk wanted him to pay for the cup. Well, I gave the clerk, I don't know what, whatever he or she wanted, but that was the thing. But then one time, I took Gordon across the street when Cindy Waller had the coffee shop over there.
Tom, I'm gonna have to ask you to come to conclusion here.
She threw him out because he asked her for a cup of hot water, but thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, if there's no one else to be heard, then the public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. I do have a couple of notes for the record. I will be signing two agreements with the city of Overland Park for the design and construction of a stormwater management project known as 89th and Craig Stormwater Improvements. And also, due to a key error, the street location to a full release of easement for the Consolidated Main Sewer District due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines has been corrected to Belmont Drive and West 67th Terrace in the city of Shawnee. That concludes Notes for the Record. Moving to the consent agenda. Will the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda items?
Item number one, consider approving June 7, 2018 business session minutes. Item number two, consider appointing Wanderer Minor as the Fourth District Representative to the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board through June 30, 2021. And item number three, request for proposal number 2018-014, consider authorizing a contract with Burns and McDonald for a solid waste management plan at a cost not to exceed $123,400.
Is there a commissioner who would like to have an item considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? No one to be heard. It's back before the commission. Mr. Osterhaus?
Move that we approve the consent agenda as read?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the action agenda, item number four.
Resolution number WD-18-018, conduct a public hearing and consider authorizing funding for the engineering and construction of Johnson County wastewater sanitary sewer relocation and improvements included in the city of Shawnee Neiman Middle, Neiman North, Neiman South Phase Two, and Neiman 6200 stormwater improvement projects in an amount not to exceed $277 million -- no, excuse me, $277,250. And consider approving four separate agreements with the city of Shawnee, Kansas, to reimburse the city for the sanitary sewer improvements.
Public hearing is open. Ms. Pekerek.
Good morning. Chairman and Commissioner Susan Pekerek with Wastewater. Neiman local agreements and the funding request as part of this resolution are similar to agreements that we've brought before the board for consideration and approval in the past. Wastewater regularly discusses plans and coordinates with the cities on their street and storm projects. This provides a very efficient and effective way for us to protect the sanitary sewers as well as provide improvements to our system that might be in conflict with the city's projects. The city of Shawnee has four projects along Neiman Road. We've got a map up here, and the areas of the projects are shown by these color overlays. And the lines you see in green are the sanitary sewers that were impacted as part of those projects. All total, about 3,200 feet of sanitary sewer and 26 manholes were impacted by the project. The city bid these projects, and the sanitary sewer portion of the work is now complete. The reimbursement amounts requested follow the guidelines that are set forth in the right-of-way agreements that we have with many of the cities across the county. These agreements were approved by -- these four agreements that are before you for consideration were approved by the Shawnee City Council on June 11. The agreements are part of -- are included as part of the packet. The total amount requested for these four projects is $277,250. And it doesn't -- and they do include engineering as well as construction for the sanitary sewer portion of the projects. The breakdown of the four projects are included in the briefing sheet, and I can cover those if you would like me to. The funding for these projects was included in our capital improvement program, which we presented most recently to you in May, and we do recommend approval for the agreements and approval for reimbursement of the funds to city of Shawnee.
Okay. Questions of the staff? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? There's no one to be heard. No further questions. The public hearing is closed. A motion would be in order. Mr. Osterhaus?
Let me look at the board adopt resolution number WD-18-018, authorizing funding for the engineering and construction of Johnson County wastewater sanitary sewer relocation and improvements included in the city of Shawnee, Neiman Middle, Neiman North, Neiman South Phase Two, and Neiman 6200 stormwater improvement projects in an amount not to exceed $277,250, and approving four separate agreements with the city of Shawnee, Kansas, to reimburse the city for the sanitary sewer improvements.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution in regards to the sanitary sewer reimbursements of the city of Shawnee. Any further questions or discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item, number five.
Request for proposal number 2017-074, consider authorizing contracts to BRB Contractors Incorporated, Crossland Heavy Contractors, and Mega Industries Corporation for wastewater facility repairs and improvements term and supply contract in an amount not to exceed $5 million annually. The contract period for this award is for one year, with an option to renew annually for four additional one-year periods.
Ms. Pekerek.
Chairman and Commissioner Susan Pekerek with Wastewater again. There is no funding requested as part of this particular item. This is for contract award only. Funding for any of the projects that the contractors under this contract would do would either be funded by the Consolidated Main Sewer District budget or by the capital improvement program. And for capital projects, we come before you and request funds before each project.
Questions?
Oh, I had a short PowerPoint, if you'd like me to run through that real quick. Sorry. So the staff developed this contract for, essentially for small projects and for urgent projects. We don't really have an efficient way to do the small projects. So what we were really seeking, or what we are seeking, are experienced contractors that can help us execute these small projects in an efficient manner, looking for ways to minimize project time and project cost. For this particular contract, we'll be paying contractors based on their actual time worked as well as their material costs plus their stated markups. As part of the RFP process, the contractors provided a rate sheet for their labor and their equipment. As I mentioned, doing small projects can be difficult. They often take, or they will take, just as much effort to conduct as a large project, and we have to put together front-end documents for all of the contract requirements, as well as details as part of a drawing sheet set that would be required as part of the contract. In addition, then, we have to go through a formal bidding process. And so those all add cost to a project, when oftentimes, on the smaller projects, we can actually get that accomplished with just doing a few drawings and working with a contractor in the field. So what we'll do is we'll save up a bunch of small projects until we have a larger project, so we can be more efficient. But what happens is we end up taking on additional risk, because we're delaying those smaller projects until we have enough to make a larger project. The other reason we look to having a contract like this is because we don't have a way to execute urgent projects at our facilities and our pump stations. And so if we have something occur, which we need to repair urgently, we end up negotiating the price for that and likely end up paying a premium, because we need to hurry up and get the project done. With these contractors on board, we'll be able to have them do the work, urgent work for us, and we've already got their rates and their equipment negotiated, those rates negotiated. So we would utilize this contract for projects that are generally in the range between $50,000 and $500,000. Those are smaller projects. We would use them on urgent projects when, so for example, we have something break down and we're at risk of not meeting our permit requirements, or we are at risk of, or we need to protect the public's health or perhaps our staff's safety and health and safety. So for example, I was trying to think of an example here. Let's say we have a pump failure at a pump station, and we need that capacity in order to be sure that we can provide the redundancy during a high-flow event. So we want to make sure we can get that repaired urgently, so that we're making sure that we're protecting the public's well-being. That's just an example of when we might use it. And of course, we would use this contract anytime staff evaluates it's the most efficient way to accomplish a project. I've gone through many of the benefits already. Again, it will help us execute those small projects more efficiently. We'll be able to save design dollars with our consultants, as well as we won't have to spend the dollars to go ahead and go through a formal bidding process. We'll be utilizing, we really focused in on experienced contractors, because we want to utilize them to help us figure out the best way to deliver a project that will be the fastest and the lowest cost. And in addition, it gives us access to these contractors and for urgent projects. And as I stated before, they'll be required to turn in their material costs, as well as we'll be out in the field monitoring their work. So there's a great deal of cost control and transparency for projects that they would be conducting. So when we issued the RFP, we had eight firms submit written proposals. Seven were selected to be interviewed for the contract. We selected three contractors, BRB, Crossland, and Mega, and I'll recommend them for award. Each of these three contractors has won multiple low-bid awards with Johnson County Wastewater in the last several years. We compared rates that were submitted as part of the RFP proposal to rates that we had seen on some of the previous contracts, and they're very comparable. We scored the contractors based on five categories: experience, contract understanding and approach, personnel resources, their interviews, which was essentially their presentation and their answers to the questions in the interview, and then cost. So as I had stated, project experience as well as cost, those were weighted the most at 30% each, because those, we felt, were critical to selecting the best contractors for this particular work that we want to do. The selection committee comprised of wastewater staff as well as public work staff, and we made the selection in accordance with the county's purchasing policies and procedures. Purchasing staff was a part of the effort. The maximum amount not to exceed for the contract is $5 million for one year, with the option to renew for four additional one-year periods. This amount represents roughly 20% of our projected facility asset renewal needs, and we recommend awarding the contract to BRB, Crossland, and Mega. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman--
Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity yesterday to meet with Ms. Pekerek and her staff. As you may recall, from time to time, I have a certain sensitivity to the competitiveness of our processes. I wanted to share with you that I appreciate Ms. Pekerek's innovative approach to try to handle these, this multitude of smaller projects. I think it makes a lot of sense. And she makes the point, but I just wanted to reinforce it, that this time and expense kind of approach does require staff to exercise a lot more oversight, to make sure that costs maintained or presented are fully justified. And I want to encourage her and her staff to make sure that that monitoring continues and offer some kind of assessment over time. And I think when we visited yesterday, she indicated that was their plan, to look at this annually, to see if it works as anticipated, and I hope it does. The other thing that I had some concerns about, which I have often expressed from this D S, is the demarcation of why certain firms are selected and are not. The explanation that was offered to me yesterday, I think, made full sense, considering the history that we have with some of these firms. So I commend Ms. Pekerek and her staff for this effort.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Allen.
I just had one, Susan, on cost. I see Mega came in sixth. Is that a significant cost difference among the ones, maybe the cost-wise, that came ahead of them?
It's not a significant difference. All the costs were within, from one to seven, it was about a 12% difference, so they would have been less than that. We certainly have the ability to negotiate with them, once the contract's awarded, and that's something that we would intend to do.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? There being no one to be heard, it's back before the commission, a motion would be in order. Mr. Schaefer.
Steve is in. Go ahead. Okay, fine. I need to find it then, okay?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I move to work in admissions of our contracts to BRB Contractors Inc., Crossland Heavy Contractors, and Mega Industries Corporation for wastewater facility repairs and improvements. Term and supply contract in an amount not to exceed $5 million annually. The contract period for this award is for one year, with an option to renew annually for four additional one-year periods per request number, for proposal number 2017-074. I so move.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the contract as indicated and recommended. Any further questions or comments? There being none, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number six.
Charter resolution number 043-18. Consider adopting and revising the Civil Service Board regulations and procedures applicable to certain employees in the Johnson County Sheriff's Office superseding and replacing the existing charter resolution number 040-08 relating to the membership responsibilities and procedures of the Civil Service Board.
Mr. Jarrett.
Don Jarrett, Chief Counsel. This item before you is a charter resolution, which essentially exempts the county from the statutory provisions that apply to civil service boards related to the Johnson County Sheriff's Office. It then substitutes provisions for those civil service regulations. It supersedes a charter resolution first done in 2003, and then modified again in 2008. As a charter resolution, it does require a supermajority board, so we do need five affirmative votes to pass the charter resolution. And as a charter resolution, we have to publish for a period of 60 days for a protest period. Should a petition with sufficient signatures be submitted to the county on this item, we would either have to repeal the resolution or put it up for an election. In the previous two charter resolutions, there have not been any comments or petitions. This charter resolution was worked on by members of the Civil Service Board, and there are representatives present today, if you have any questions, as well as representatives from the Sheriff's Office and the sheriff. And his good stalwarts are here to answer any questions also. There are a significant number of changes from the 2008 version, but substantively, it's pretty much contains the same types of protections. That is a civil service board, that is civilians, who review basically the hiring, the promotion, and the disciplinary actions of the Sheriff's Department with respect to the covered employees to ensure that those decisions are being made on appropriate considerations, and not for the purpose of politics or popularity or something of that nature. The Civil Service Board has functioned in Johnson County since the 1960s. In 2003, we did the charter to substantially upgrade how we approach civil service because of public-sector employment issues that sometimes civil citizens appointed to boards may not fully be conversant with. And so we do require that, under the civil service, that people with expertise or knowledge in public sector, in law enforcement and/or in human resources, be those members. We have two members that are Johnson County employees to ensure that we have a full oversight consistent with how the rest of the county operates. With that, I will stand for questions, or the sheriff is here, or Carol Gonzalez, Becky Sanders, Salters, and...
Mr. Jarrett, let me ask you this question. These changes come to us supported by the Civil Service Commission, as well as the Sheriff's Office, is that right?
They do.
And process-wise, action that might be taken this morning would be subject to, did you say, a 60-day?
60-day protest period, yes.
And following that time period, do we need to take additional action?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jarrett, last week I had asked you for a red-line copy of the changes, and I appreciate that. You had indicated that there were substantial changes. There was a lot of red ink, probably half of which, which is fine. I looked at this, and I don't have any disagreements with what you said, but it does appear that there's a shift somewhat between, and you refer to it as the disciplinary component of the process, that would insert the Civil Service Board, not substantially more, but noticeably more in certain actions. Were there any other changes other than that that are significant that we should be aware of?
I don't believe so. Most of the rest of it is procedurally to become more efficient and to allow the sheriff a little more flexibility in how he times out doing hiring and promotions.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Anyone present who would like to speak to this item? All right, there's no one to be heard. It's back before the commission, the motion is in order. Mr. Allen.
I move for approval of resolution, charter resolution number 04318, adopting and revising the Civil Service Board regulations and procedures applicable to certain employees in the Johnson County Sheriff's Office superseding and replacing the existing charter resolution number 040-08 relating to the membership responsibilities and procedures of the Civil Service Board.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution in regards to the Civil Service Board regulations as applies to the Sheriff's Department. Any further questions or discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried.
I will note that the resolution form requires signatures from all of those voting affirmative, so if at some point this morning you concede, Linda, to get your signature in there, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other items to be considered on the action agenda?
No, sir.
All right, moving to reports and communications, Ms. Post Oak Ferguson.
Chairman and Commissioners, you have four items before you this morning. In the interest of time, I will move fairly fast, and you can slow me down if you'd like to ask questions or in more detail. The first item is the 2017 Alcohol Tax Fund Year-end Report. There were 23 programs that received allocations of $1,731,313, and that included participants, residents, getting, 48,286 residents that either participated in the program or received funding from, at least in part, these funds. And Maya Shott from UCS, Director of Resource Allocation, is present if there's questions. So I'll pause and see if there are any, and if Maya will move on.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the city of Lenexa. There's a notice of city approval for a number of project plans, TIF project plans, passed on June 5th. There were three for City Center, and then one for I-35 and 95th Street Redevelopment District, home to by Hilton and Office Project. And you will see in the manager's memo this week, Mr. Brown had asked for some summary-level information that we pulled from the information the city sent us. I hope that's helpful, and you guys can give me feedback, either now or later, if you find that helpful. And at times, we will not have information to put in there, but we'll put what we have. So I hope that's helpful. And the next item is IRB's Notice of Public Hearing from the city of Lenexa for a project located at 9801 through 9807 Alden Street in Lenexa. Public hearing Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. And you'll see in this case, in the information that we added, we didn't have the full information to put in there, but we did footnote the principal amount of bonds to be issued equals 13 million. Not positive, we don't know yet if that's the total project cost. So just adding that footnote on that item. And then the last item, Tom Franzen is here to speak briefly about the letter that you may have seen that was sent this morning to K-Door regarding the digital license plate production project.
Mr. Franzen, welcome. We are under a time crunch this morning, so...
I understand completely. Thank you, Chairman, Tom Franzen, County Treasurer. Just wanted to briefly bring you up to speed on the latest information regarding the state of Kansas's implementation of the new license plate production and delivery process, better known as DLPP, or digital license plate production. Wanted to make you aware, the memo that was provided to the board provides the latest information. We will also be getting a press release out to the media shortly after this meeting here. Along the same lines, we will be providing more information in our offices beginning early next week, and then the second week in July, we anticipate receiving training from the Department of Revenue on how the process will unfold. The process is going live August 1st. And just for the community to understand what we're talking about here, digital license plates, you may have seen those in different parts of the country, even in our metro area. These plates are not embossed. They are flat plates. They are digitally printed. It's a more efficient process. So knowing that, the state of Kansas has been working to get to this change in their process. It does not affect the entire population in Johnson County. It will just affect those that are getting new plates. So if you are buying a new car, those types of transactions, you will now have a change in your process. You will not actually get a plate from your county treasurer. You will get a plate mailed to your home address, or the address that we have on file in the system. That will be how you receive the plate. You will actually get a registration to cal sticker showing that you paid your property tax from us. Once you receive that plate in the mail, we ask you to go ahead and affix that sticker to the plate, and then attach that to your car. That, is it in a nutshell? Be happy to answer any questions.
It's my understanding that statewide treasurers are fairly well-united in the concerns that have been raised at the Department of Revenue, is that right?
That is correct. And the chairman's referring to the concern associated with the fact that we have a very efficient process we're moving to, although one of the parts of that process is not as efficient as we would like, namely the fact that a plate is coming to your address, but you're having to physically come into an office to get something from us to make that plate valid.
But you go into the office, you get the sticker. Seven to 10 days later, you get the plate to put the sticker on.
That is correct.
Hopefully, you still have the sticker in your possession when the plate arrives, and that you haven't put it someplace else where it shouldn't be. I think there's going to be some challenges in all of us understanding that process, and so if I've misplaced my sticker and the plate comes, that's a problem.
And that will be part of our communication efforts, really to educate the community on the fact that while this is a change in process, there is something on their behalf they need to do, and that is pay attention and actually affix that sticker to the plate when it arrives.
Good. All right, thank you. Mr. Ashcraft.
Mr. Chairman, to build on that, so, Mr. Franzen, who's responsible for the communication plan? Is that something we are taking upon ourselves, or is the state coordinating this?
Well, to be clear, this is the state of Kansas function. As county treasurer, I act as an agent. The state of Kansas has a communication plan. What we are doing locally is enhancing that plan. So we're hopeful that we'll get that information out, and those that will be coming into our office after August 1st will be aware of the change in process, and then we'll be able to actually finalize the process.
Mr. Allen.
I'll be a little bit more blunt. Process stinks. What's efficient about mailing something when in the past we would have had those inventoried and be able to put the sticker on and hand it to them, and the transaction's completed? So, very disappointed. They're actually increasing their cost by mailing those all out, so...
And while you bring up a valid point, I do want to say, as we take a look at the bigger picture, the entire process is changing. The inventory management associated with this was very costly. The state would produce plates based on an estimate. They would not use all those plates, so they would over-produce capacity. So that was a waste of resources there. So we're addressing that. The efficiencies associated with how we deliver those plates is really what we're talking about. And as the chairman alluded to, we are employing the state to quickly get to finding a more efficient process than the one they'll have that go live.
Okay. Well, we know the state is very good at that.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else?
Nothing further, thank you.
All right, turning to commission comments, Mr. Brown.
None, thank you, Chairman.
And Mr. Osterhaus.
Just say it's good to be back. Our means in San Francisco have it very well, and we thank NACO and the League of Cities for inviting us out to speak on, and to participate in the roundtables on juveniles in the criminal justice system. We're looking forward to the next year and our collaborations with the cities and county and our corrections department to make those things go a little bit smoother. I had an opportunity to meet with some of the silver-haired legislators yesterday. It was nice to meet with them and hear some of their concerns about legislation going forward. I also want to thank Representatives Clayton and Parker for giving us some information on a grandparents bill that they're really interested in. And that's all I have, Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Allen.
No comments.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Klicka.
Nothing, Mr. Sir.
Mr. Schaefer.
Well, I'll add a couple of things. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Monday afternoon, had a chance to participate and be at the St. Luke's Hospital grand opening, the emergency center in southern Roland Park, a brand-new facility. So it's a building very, very important to our community, and that if you have an emergency, you get transported there instead of to your hospital. Very nice, very nice facility. Tuesday afternoon, Susan and I had a chance to go to the Mid-America Regional Council retirement party for Georgia Nestle Road. You all know Georgia. She's been a stalwart contributor to all things Mark. She's been employed there for 22 years. We wish her well in her retirement. If you see her around the neighborhood, say, "Job well done." And also, yesterday afternoon, the regional chambers, Kansas City, Kansas, Kansas City, Missouri, and Northeast Johnson County had a mutual function at the law firm of McAnany Van Cleveland Phillips. They do that once a year, just to get together and get a chance to meet other people in your region. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Just a note, we have a joint meeting with the Evergreen Living Board and staff beginning 11:30 AM at their facility out at 119th and Ridgeview. We also have a request for an executive session. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Chairman. I would move that the board recess its open meeting and convene an executive session at approximately 10:35 AM for a period of 15 minutes, for the purpose of receiving the advice of council, and to preserve attorney-client privilege, and for an additional period of 25 minutes, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected officials, and to reconvene an open sessionist's room at approximately 11:15 AM, or as soon thereafter as the executive session may end.
Excuse me, wouldn't that be 11:05?
If we start...
You're right, 11:15. I'm second. I'm sorry. Second. Yep. I'm thinking 30 minutes, not 40. All right. The motion before us, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. We do have a agenda review, and then an agenda review for the PBC spatial station, so we are in recess, and as soon as we're able, we'll come back for the agenda review for next week's business session. Thank you all very much. The record will reflect that at 11:15 AM, the commission reconvened into open session, and we do have one item of business to take care of. Mr. Klicka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board authorize the chairman, to an extent, an offer, and with the vice-chairman, negotiate contract terms and conditions with Penny Post Oak Ferguson to serve as the new county manager.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the motion. Is there any discussion? I would just simply make this clarification at a subsequent meeting, assuming there is a negotiated contract to present, then official action will be taken at that time. All right. Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. That does conclude our business session today, so we are adjourned, and we're on our way to Evergreen Living.